Well, hello readers. Thank you again for joining us for another round of our endorsement interviews, this time with Redmond School Board candidates Ron Osmanson and Levon Medlock. We are disappointed to report that the third candidate in this range, Jill Cummings, has refused to make herself available for questions. So we absolutely appreciate Ron and Levon even more for their dedication to process. It is actually important. So Levon, we're going to start the questions with you. The format for this thing is we will ask each of the candidates alternating questions as we go back and forth. Everybody will have time to answer the questions to their fullest ability. So Levon, why don't you introduce yourself and say why you're running for this position?
Well, first of all, thank you both for having me today. If I dance oddly, it's to keep the motion sensor on my light on. As you noticed, it just went out a minute ago, so my apologies for that. Hello, everyone. My name is Levon Medlock. I am a longtime resident of Redmond, Oregon, at Redmond since 2005. I have two children in the district currently enrolled, and I'm interested in serving on the Redmond School District Board because I believe that every child in our community deserves access to a quality, safe, compassionate, and equitable education. Education is a value that my parents instilled in me at a very young age, and it's one that I pass on to my children. It's opened up doors that otherwise would have not been open to me, and I am passionate about ensuring that we have at least that same opportunity, if not better, for the children of our community. As we all know, Deschutes County, and in particular Redmond, is growing at a rapid rate. It's one of the fastest growing counties in the country, and I believe we have an obligation to our youth to advocate for them so that they are able to compete in the global economy 10 years from now. And I bring a fresh perspective to the board. I have lived in central Oregon for a long time. I've also lived other places in the United States. I've lived overseas. I have professionally owned my own business in central Oregon. I've been a stay-at-home mom with two children as my full-time occupation, which was a delightful stage in my life. And I'm also full-time employed now with children in the district. So I think bringing those perspectives to the Redmond School District Board can help represent the diverse needs of all of the families in our community so that we are creating opportunity for children throughout the district, rural as well as within the rural population. My children actually went to Terrabond Community School, which is the Title I school for elementary and middle school. So I believe I also have that being able to advocate for our children, no matter what size school they belong to or what the service area might be. So I appreciate you guys providing the opportunity for us to talk with each other today. Thank you.
Ron, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, my name is Ron Osmanson. I've been also a longtime resident of Redmond. I've been in Oregon since 1999. My father was in the Navy, so I moved back and forth between Redmond and San Diego a lot. I did attend public school in San Diego under the San Diego Unified School District, and it's one of the most diverse school districts in the nation. And I moved up here to Oregon because my dad wanted to retire up here. So we said, hey, let's go move to Oregon. So we moved to Oregon, and I've been, I started my education over in San Diego State for a little bit, but then transferred my credits up to Climas Community College, where I then went on to OIT to finish up with that with a degree in Communications. So I've been pretty in-depth in our community. I currently sit as the City of Redmond Planning Commission, as a planning commissioner. I am also on the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council as a board member and also on the Redmond Budget Committee. Besides that, I'm running for school board because I believe that every child deserves an equal education. I believe that we need to focus on our children rather than the politics and things that are going on in our school district, and we need to make sure that these kids are protected from any outside influences, such as political affirmations or other issues that are affecting our community right now and nation. So that's why I'm running for school board. I'm not doing it under any kind of political stressors right now. I'm just doing this as a parent because I am concerned as a parent because my child will be entering kindergarten, and I don't want information to be put into his brain and instilled into him when he goes through his educational career. So that's why I'm running for school board. Thank you.
Thanks to both of you. So this question starts with Ron this time. What's your biggest concern for the students of your district? You mentioned a little bit, but let's elaborate.
Well, after this pandemic, it's been really, really stressful on our kids mentally and emotionally. I've coached this past season at Ridgeview with a football team, and just seeing all these students come back to play sports was just like a weight lifted off of them. Getting in pads and hitting and taking all that stress off of their shoulders, you know, getting to see their friends and stuff. I think that's going to be a big key to getting our kids back in the schools is to get them emotionally prepped and ready to go for the next following year if we do decide to go back full-time. Or we're going back full-time right now, five days a week, but I mean, like a full year. We're only seeing maybe about like two months of going back to school, and that's going to put a lot of pressure on these kids. And, you know, they're going to have to build new relationships, new peers, new groups to socialize with because they couldn't have that at the beginning of the year. So I think one of the major issues we have to deal with is their mental stability going forward and how we're going to deal with this pandemic and how we're going to make it safe for these kids to go back to school.
Great. Levon, would you like me to repeat the question? So just simply, what is your biggest concern for the students of your district? You're muted.
We should start a running tally of how often one of us says that. My apologies. I feel like between Zoom, WebEx, and Teams, my brain is always jumping around. I wear the mute button, so thank you for that prompt. You know, I think our children are resilient. I think that there definitely has been a loss of learning in this past academic year. But I believe in our teachers as experts who deal with this every fall when they factor in loss of money that occurs naturally over the summer. And so I really want to be able to advocate for the needs of our students and our teachers that they are set up for success. I think perhaps one of the concerns for students in the district just globally outside of, I know the pandemic has localized for the last 12 months, so this is a four-year term, and I want to make sure that we are playing the long game here. And we're interested in setting up our children for academic success in the long run and factoring in how we can provide an educational experience for the whole student. And every student comes with a different set of needs and learning abilities and challenges. So how do we find the right balance in being able to nurture the whole student and set them up both for success academically and success in life as citizens of our community as well as our country and the entire world? So biggest concern really is ensuring that we have a solid group of leaders at the board level that have the educational experience. Ron mentioned, thank you for prompting. I forgot to mention that I actually graduated from one of the top public schools in the country with a degree in public health. I'm about six weeks away from graduating from LSU with my master's degree. So really, again, providing diversity of thought on the school district board, where we have board directors that are advocating for different post-graduation opportunities. It's important. I think that we have folks that, we have children who will want to pursue vocational work, trades, personal work, you know, go to college for your degrees, et cetera. And I just really like to ensure that all of those perspectives are represented on the board so that every child in the district is represented.
What makes good school board member, Levon, in your opinion?
Fantastic question. Thank you for asking. I think a school board member should represent the community that they live in. I think having children in the district is important. I think that having an educational background that can help provide a different perspective to the board is also important. And I think professionally, having experience in operational leadership, but also people skills, change management, collaboration, critical thinking skills, all of those things are incredibly important. I've had the benefit of all a really good, solid K through 12 education that set me up for a four-year degree from a top public school in the country. I mentioned that I'm now pursuing my master's degree. And then professionally, I've run my own business, so I have the vendor relationship background. I have the employee management background. I have the PR and community outreach background. I also think that with my current employer, I've led projects, including opening new buildings, managing a $66 million budget, coaching and teaching, process improvement, and leadership development for our executives. So those are all, you know, hard skills as well as soft skills that I think would be beneficial. The other thing that I think that's important is involvement and a long-term commitment to youth. My commitment to youth goes back to when I was in college and I started tutoring kids. And then as a young adult, teaching ESL on the weekends. And then, you know, I've had board involvement within the community while I've lived in Redmond. I was on the board of Start Here Preschool, which was the parent-man cooperative that my children went to when they were young, you know, three to five. And I currently serve on the Board of Reach, which is a youth enrichment program in Redmond as well, generally serving before and after school needs, but also providing care gaps during breaks in the summer. So involvement in community, professional preparedness, the ability to listen, the ability to ask thoughtful questions, the ability to bring people to the table to have productive dialogue are all important criteria for being an effective board member. Thank you.
Ron, do you need me to repeat the question?
Oh, no, that's okay. So being a good school board member, I mean, there's a lot of factors that come into being a good school board member. You have to be compassionate about what you do, and you have to be passionate about the position that you're elected to. You also have to know what's coming out of Salem as far as legislative items, bills that are coming up, and you have to be on that because they directly affect our schools. You know, like, so we have to be, this whole thing with everything that's been going on, I mean, everything needs to be put under a microscope and examined before they reach, before they reach the board member. So, I mean, being a good board member means, you know, putting extra time and effort into your position and learning what you are going to be doing and putting a new perspective into what you're going to be putting out on the table that affects our students in the long run. And, you know, as Redmond grows, we're going to be, there's talk about expanding the UGB line or the urban growth boundary, which means Redmond's going to be huge here soon. And we're going to be about 50,000 people in population. We're going to be about the size of Bend here pretty soon. And, you know, with land use knowledge as a planning commissioner, I could help identify property to put in a new school on the north end side of town when that comes to a point where we need to expand our schools and build another school. So that's another thing that we could also look forward to. I have knowledge of budgeting. We have several million-dollar budget that's going into the city of Redmond, and, you know, I've been helping try to put a conservative budget on the table for our city. And, you know, I have vast knowledge of that right now, which I cannot share with you guys, but that's a major thing I could help with as a school board member.
Thanks, Ron. So you mentioned this, knowing what's going on in Salem. And we wanted to bring up one issue that's moving through the legislature right now. They may soon pass a bill that allows local governments the option to ban people with concealed carry permits from bringing firearms into public buildings. So I'd like to know each of your philosophy on whether the schools and the district office should be gun-free zones and whether people with concealed carry should be required to check their guns at the door. And I believe this one starts with Ron.
So I'm pro 2A. I do believe that all people should be able to carry illegally. And, but I do also believe that guns do not have a place in schools. I do believe that we do need school resource officers in order to protect our schools. So I am a big advocate of expanding our school resource officer program here in Redmond and working collaboratively with the Redmond Police Department in order to facilitate that. But otherwise, I do believe in healthy and protected schools. And I think there should be a gun-free zone. I mean, there should be no reason why somebody should be able to carry, but, you know, they should also consider leaving it in their vehicle or leaving it in my home.
Thanks. Levon, do you need a repeat of that question?
I think I got it. Thank you for offering. You know, I anticipated that this question was coming, so I took a little bit of time to research what the current district policies are around guns on campus. And I have no dispute with the district policies that are in place at the moment. I know that good people put good work and bought into it, especially trying to balance the needs of our community with what comes down in terms of legislation. What I will offer is that my key priority is providing a safe experience for our students. And most of, there's a lot of research out there that actually talks about how the best way to ensure a safe environment for learning in schools is to limit entry to a single point of access. And then also to shore up the communication system between the school and emergency response personnel. So I'm really grateful to the good people of our community that advanced the Redmond bond last year that passed because that work has already begun, and those funds are already being used toward those ends where 911 is a phone call away. And we are at the point of, a single point of access for many schools. So I think that we're making strides in the right direction. And as board members, our job will be to listen to our community and ensure that we are putting the safety of our kids before any other agenda.
I just wanted to ask a quick follow-up, just for those not familiar. Just can you reiterate what the policy is currently for the district?
Sure. Thank you for asking. Yes. By my understanding, there are published policies that prohibit staff or employees, educators, students, et cetera, to bring weapons of any sort onto campus as well as unless, for visitors, they are not able to, I'll use the word brandish, I don't think that's actually what's the policy, but it cannot visibly be shown because it is a distraction to learning. And so, you know, I think that the existing board or previous board did what they needed to do based on what the legislation in Salem was that they were presented with. This incoming board will have a task before them to address the component of it, which is a gap currently, which is concealed permit piece of it. Does that help clarify?
Yes.
So, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Levon, I'm going to start with you with this question. The rate of growth in Deschutes County as a whole, but particularly in Redmond, has been quite speedy. And for people who do not live in the Redmond area, the changes there have been pretty dramatic. And I was wondering if you could each speak to what your perception is of that growth and what you feel is going to be the needs or some of the compelling things that are going to come because of that growth. Levon, you would start.
Absolutely. So my mother-in-law actually was born and raised in Bend. Her dad ran the old mill when it was actually a mill that processed lumber. So when she comes in visiting, we have these conversations around how Wall Street was one stoplight when she was a kid and Bend High was the only school. And having lived in Redmond for 16 years now, my husband and I talk about how you've just seen so much growth in those years and the trajectory for the next 10 or 15 is just incredible. You know, I think that it's exciting. I think that we are at a position where we can have the best of a small-town, safe community while providing opportunities for growth for our kiddos that may not have existed 10 or 15 years ago. But in order for us to do that, we need to invest in infrastructure. We need to invest in building out the city in a sensible way. And we need to invest in ensuring that, for the school district in particular, that we are keeping pace with the needs of the community. That means, you know, where we have recruitment underway for teachers to anticipate additional children, then we're looking at the population growth. So we're keeping up with infrastructure investments in terms of building new schools, renovating existing schools, et cetera. And I think that we also need to keep a pulse on what's happening within the state and the country and globally, in fact, in terms of trends toward economy and job growth so that we are able to provide learning opportunities for our children that set them up to be successful in that future economy. I know that just with any growth, there are growing pains, and it won't be a smooth and easy process. But it's happening, whether we wish for it to happen or not. So my perspective is to, you know, be thoughtful and considerate about how we can leverage it to benefit our existing residents and set up our future citizens for success.
Great. Ron, do you want me to repeat the question, or are you good?
No, I'm good. Thank you. So, yeah, Redmond is growing at a pace that we're trying to keep up with. As you can see around us, there's a lot of construction going on, a lot of triple housing units. And just over by Safeway, they're building that new development out there. And also with the development of Skyline Village up in our northeastern side, which will accommodate for affordable housing, which was passed by a house bill not too long ago by our representative, Jack Zika. You know, that particular area is going to be pretty much a population boom. There's going to be a lot of people moving in there from all walks of life. You know, every day I see people coming in from Texas or California or Washington, people being bussed up here and, you know, wanting to live here and make a better life for themselves. And, you know, that's the kind of thing that Redmond is known for. You know, in our past history, the Oregon Truck Railroad was coming up to Redmond, and Redmond was just being developed. And, you know, all kinds of people were coming in. They had a large marketplace. We were a timber-heavy industry out here at one point. And now that's being changed by our population growth. So, you know, in about 10 years, yeah, we're going to be about 50,000 people. But we also, as a school board member, we have to start analyzing what the needs are for our students and how we're going to accommodate for them as we grow. You know, as I said before, we may need to put another school up on the north side of town just to accommodate for the growth. And, you know, like, we have to be conscious about our infrastructure. South Highway 97 project might be coming in here shortly, and that's going to accommodate for more traffic as more people come in. So that's the kind of things that we need to be mindful about. And, you know, the population boom, we need to start developing on the west side of Redmond. And, you know, there might be more need for more school on that side of town, too, you know? Or like another middle school or high school or whatnot. So we need to take a position on how we're going to accommodate for these students when our town starts booming and becomes over about, we need to look on the long run for about like 100,000 people rather than the 50,000 people that are coming in. It has to be a long-term deal if we're going to do something.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay, so another legislature question. In March, the legislature allocated $250 million for summer programs to help students catch up and gain enrichment after this year of online instruction. How do you think this funding should be used in the district? And we're starting with Ron on this one.
Well, we need to focus on the students that are struggling the most as far as grades are concerned and performance. We need to build a, if they want to do a program in the summer, we should focus on them getting caught up on their work that they felt left behind and offer extracurricular activities for those students since they will be missing out on things that they have during the year and the summer when they're trying to catch up. So, I mean, that's something we need to focus on as well as consumables like PPE and then keeping our kids safe.
Great. You need a repeat, Levon?
I don't believe so. Thank you. I think that the role of the board is to do a gap assessment of how we should use that money. You know, I think that especially with four new directors coming in, there needs to be an assessment of what learning has occurred at the board level around gaps that exist. And then how can we best leverage that money? There's research out there that shows that summer school isn't always successful because it's considered punitive. So how do we, if that is the route that we choose to go, how do we make it exciting? How do we, you know, provide extracurricular sports activities, social engagement? Food, food's always great. People like pizza. Not to oversimplify, but really, you know, people have had a hard year. And the summer is, people play in the summer. That's why we live here. So I would really look to the experts in the district, teachers, our administrators, frankly, focus groups with students. How can we best support them? Because I think that if we give the right support to our children, they are resilient and they will bounce back. They will learn. So it's a matter of understanding what our current condition is. We know where we'd like to be. Then creatively and collaboratively, putting forth solutions that help use those funds in the most responsible way from a taxpayer perspective, but also in a way that will improve the experience for our children.
This time, I'll start with Levon. What is your overall impression of how the district has handled the COVID-19 pandemic? And what, if anything, would you have done differently?
I believe that everyone that works in the district and lives in the community has the best interests of our children at heart. I have, you know, a deep amount of empathy for being in a position where the rules by which you're engaging change daily, weekly, monthly, such as the nature of a global pandemic. I think that the district was on the receiving end of changes from the Oregon Department of Education, CDC, et cetera. Working in healthcare, I can tell you that the first, you know, March through June and then again October through December felt like a new day every day because this is a once-in-a-100-year experience. If we had a playbook, we would play by it. But this is where the critical But this is where the critical thinking and experience of your leadership really comes into play. Um I don't envy the folks that had to be on the receiving end of uh that experience. Uh because I can tell you that it's not fun. Um I do think that the district uh has some challenges with communication um from a parent perspective. So that is something that I would have wanted to uh improve and streamline. Uh I think that people uh are appreciative of um the the conundrum frankly that they were faced with. If there had been a little bit more transparency, perhaps that might have helped people truly understand it. Um and that would be something that I think regardless of whether it's a pandemic or not, improving communication between administrators, teachers, and parents really helps children be successful. Because when everyone in a children's network is surrounding them and supporting them, uh it tends to be a more productive uh learning environment for those children. Um I do think that uh whenever the district could advocate for um the students, they did so. But I was really impressed with their um desire to keep the safety and the health of their population, both their students and their teachers, uh front of mind is really important. Um you know, I know that there was a lot of frustration in February when we had an announcement that we were going back to school and then that changed. Um but I, as a operational leader, understand that there are tons of moving pieces around whether or not you can bring a school district back online. You know, uh things like bus routes. Do we have enough bus routes and buses and drivers to get kids to school and maintain the social distancing? You know, at one point in time, we had close to a hundred um students and staff out in quarantine due to exposures. How do you staff the classroom when you have those logistical issues as well? So I know that there's been frustration, but I also believe in in the good the good um intention. Um and again, wanted to offer compassion and empathy for the fact that this is a once-in-a-one-hundred-year thing. Um and we did the best we could or they did the best with uh the information that was presented to them on a week-by-week or sometimes day-by-day.
Ron, did you need me to repeat the question?
No, uh thank you for for asking. Um so when when this uh pandemic hit, uh there was a lot of stuff going through people uh for in in people's heads, uh and especially the parents. How is the school district going to effectively communicate with the parents to tell them how, why they're closing the schools? And what we're gonna do and come up with a plan of action in order to make these kids success successful if this thing drag drag on. And you know, Levon hit it on the head with the communication part. Um you know, a simple uh you know, text, uh I mean, the the school district has like a a text to a parent communication relay. And they could have put that to work and you know, set out uh parental texts, emails, just communicating with parents, say, hey, we're working on something and you know, this is what we're gonna do. Parents didn't see any of that. So you know, I I rent a shop here in southwest Redmond here and uh we absorbed a lot of the students that were not going to school during the pandemic. And we had at one time nine children doing online schooling all at the same time. And we, it it was hard to communicate between provider, parent, and school district on what we needed to do effectively to get these kids learning. And you know, we also saw problems with uh uh children not bringing their hotspots. So we would log out our uh internet here at at our home in order to uh facilitate their internet needs uh for online schooling. So I mean, there there's a lot of things that we could do as far as um try trying to change things going forward, but looking back on it, uh there there's a we could have, we could have had the kids go back to school safely with uh with the proper things that we're going through. I mean, look at our some of the private schools that are going on right now. They're in school full-time. They had had hardly any outbreaks of COVID and they're they're running their programs like they should with proper uh healthy uh guidelines. And you know, that's something that the school district should have looked at. You know, how can we bring back the kids safely and be able to keep them on track going forward? So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Well, we have a similar question. Um and it's interesting.
Nicole, might I just, I'm sorry if you didn't see the raised hand. Might I just make one comment? I hate to speak over you, but I think the yellow hand blended into my my trees over there. Um I just want to clarify uh one thing about what Ron just mentioned. Um public schools are under the jurisdiction of the Oregon Department of Education. And so while private schools might have been able to host in-person learning, that opportunity was not in front of, it it wasn't within the jurisdiction of the school board or our administrators. So I just wanna be clear to your listeners that um that that was not on the table for public school. Uh and perhaps isn't necessarily a very fair comparison because private school operates under a a completely different setup compared to um our public school um situation. So just wanted to add that.
Hey, Ron, would you like?
Yeah, I just wanted to rebut on that. So like, I I had a conversation with Cole Gillum a couple times about, you know, how how private schools are much more different than uh public schools. And he told me that there was no guidance set out in stone on how to get these kids back to school. That's why uh public schools couldn't get back safely. But you know, I I understand uh the OEA's uh standpoint on it. But you know, as far as the 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 school district uh trying to talk to the OEA in order to to move something forward, we need to to get uh the OEA to cooperate with the school district. That's why the the liability was signed so that we could try to get uh kids back into school. And also um with the the three-foot or the change from six foot, six feet to thirty feet, allowed the children to get back into school safely. So I think that played a major role in it, but it could have been done a lot sooner. And that's just what I think about it.
Well, um we uh sounds like we touched on a a thing that um you you two might um have a little bit of difference around. But what I wanted to talk about, um you both mentioned communication is something that was really important during that time. Um what do you believe um the role of social media should be for a school board member board member as a tool of communication for um communicating with parents and families and students? And I believe um this one goes to Ron first.
Well, I think it's important that uh social media, well, social media should be a uh be i- i- it's it's tool, um but I believe that school board members should be transparent um and and informing the the parent uh or parents um of what's going on with the school board or schools or uh things like that in that nature. I don't think it should be used as a political platform um rather than a tool to help um a tool to research and inform parents.
Great. Levon, you need to repeat.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I heard the middle part correctly.
Sure. Um so just wanna know what um your philosophy is around the use of social media as a board member to communicate with um with the, you know, stakeholders in your district.
Gotcha. Um I think that as we are campaigning, it's an interesting way for people to understand who we are. Um you know, as we are in the process now of trying to get people to understand our platforms. So I actually do encourage um your listeners to take and if I'm sure you both have already done your homework, uh but I would definitely uh encourage you all to take a look at how social media is being used and uh by the candidates in this election cycle. Um I I do think that social media is a tool. It's one communication tool. It's not the only one. Um and I think that if the if elected, a school board member uh must be able to represent the school board professionally. Uh and that there, if it isn't already, there should be so some sort of agreement as to how uh social media is used. Because as an elected official, you would want to ensure that uh it is being used to advance the school board mission and vision. Um and as a communication tool for that platform, not for any sort of uh personal or political agendas. Um so it's one way to reach out. It's not the only way. I know folks that um are on social media and I know folks that aren't. Um so you know, I would add it to the list of outreach that might be an option, but definitely one that should uh represent the school board um transparently, but also professionally.
Thank you. So we, excuse me, we're getting close to the end of our questions and we wanna
To rebut on that.
Sure, sure.
It it also gives you, I I mean, as a school board member, you wanna reach out to your community. So this is the kind of a way to to kind of extend your hand and say, hey, I'm here for you and you know, I want to help you and let you know what's going on with our school district and everything that's going on, like uh simple postings or like board meetings and uh you know, what what are decisions that the school board makes? And important things that are uh students are gonna be uh facing that the parents could uh look at. Uh you know, if they can't attend a a school board meeting because they're working. So it gives them an opportunity to kind of like see what we're doing and uh being transparent in a way that they they could uh uh you know, defriend the school board uh uh the sitting school board members, you know? And and it's like, uh you know, we're here for you. That's that's all it is. So.
Got it. Um we are getting close to the end. I have one more question for both of you. And then we're gonna uh offer you the opportunity to bring up anything that we didn't bring up. Um so um this past year has been um brought increased attention to the needs of people of color and students of color. Um what um, let's see, what is my question? What if any changes would you make or propose in your district to better meet the needs of students of color? Um and where are we? Who 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 goes next? Let's see who's who's on it the most. Is it is it Levon? Okay.
I think it's me, but you know, we can rock, paper, scissors it if we need to. I always lose. Um so that's a great question. And actually, it reminds me that um I forgot to um share with your your listeners, um and you both about how I got introduced to the Redmond School District. Um I actually applied for an appointment in two thousand and fifteen. So my desire to serve on the school district board has gone back a long time. Um and at that time, um I was really interested, um I'll be completely transparent. I didn't even know it was an elected position. I have completed job applications that are more complicated than that application. Um so I really thought that it was just an interview and and I went forward. I was short shortlisted. I was one of the last of the two finalists. And part of my uh desire to serve at that time had to do with representation. Uh because we didn't have even a woman on the board at that point in time. So that was important to me. Um and fast forward five years, the Redmond School District actually launched an equity task force last year. And I um applied to be on, it's been my honor to serve on that equity task force. What it's shown me is that uh the school district has invested in an assessment for how we can create a more welcoming and inclusive uh learning environment for our students. Um and that assessment was done several years ago, uh but hasn't been actioned. So it was definitely part of the impetus for ensuring that we have a school board that believes in um representing our entire student population and investing in um some making some of those changes that were prepared. And simple things like, you know, we have um students whose parents uh need a translator at conferences in order to be able to support the success of their student. So how do we create those opportunities to engage parents who may not be native speakers um in the development and education of their children? Um so there's actually quite a bit of work that the Redmond um School District Equity Task Force has been doing in the last six months um to develop not just an equity lens um that we're interested in presenting to the board, but also think about the ways in which we can uh look at how we diversify our workforce. You know, the Redmond spokesman read, excuse me, wrote an article a couple of weeks ago about how uh Redmond is going to be uh investing in diversifying their teaching workforce because representation does matter. Um and so I'm so excited just to see the candidates running for school board this term uh and how it gets us a little bit closer to reflecting to the composition of our community. So there are there changes that I would recommend? Absolutely. And they are grounded in the findings of the Equity Task Force that I've been working on and the research findings that have been done by outside consultants that have come in to do with a third-party assessment of the school district.
Yeah. Uh would you like a repeat, Ron?
Uh no. So you know, I I think uh at this time, time and age, we have to be mindful of everybody that's around us. Um you know, I think, you know, we we shouldn't uh focus on the younger children on learning uh uh like, you know, how how things are uh uh being taught as far as like uh uh like uh social justice and all that other stuff. Um but you know, I I think at a a a later age, like in high school, we should bring back a a more comprehensive uh civics course for older children or older kids to learn in in order to to uh be a uh a resource resourceful um person in life, you know? Because like, you know, everybody comes from different walks of life. You know, I'm Filipino-American, you know? My kids are half Filipino-American and you know, my kid came to me one time. He's like, daddy, why you, why you're a different color? I'm like, really? Where do you learn this from? I told him, we're 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 all made the same. And you know, we we could inform them, but we we can't just wait on them and say, hey, well, you know, this this is a um the certain um uh person's better than the other or something, you know? So I I I think we we have to kind of be mindful about how we approach um things of this nature. I mean, every, we have, we have all kinds of um uh a few, like I I coach like a all different types of people, like Mexicans, uh and uh Asians. And you know, I get along with all of them. But we just need to to identify and find out what we're doing wrong and how we're going to um approach it. So you know, I I I just think we 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 need to take it a different uh different approach on this.
Oh, wrong reaction. I meant to raise my hand, not applaud. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I got fingered that.
We non-applaud is noted.
My apologies. Uh I'm sorry, Ron. I didn't mean to to talk over.
No, you're fine. It's it's okay.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to, um I don't know if the word rebuttal is right, but I just wanna clarify that equity means equal for all. It doesn't mean anyone is better. Um and that is important because it's about advancing anyone at the disadvantage of others. It's about creating an equitable opportunity for all of our kids. And it isn't just about, you know, I know that you mentioned BIPOC in particular, Nicole, but it's also about students that have learning disabilities or might have deficits that we need to address so that um they are teed up to be successful um in their lives. That's what K through education gives you.
Yeah, because like my 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 kid, my kids are uh on IEP right now. And you know, there there's there's some differences between, you know, being in a normal classroom and being in an IEP classroom where one kid gets uh more than the other. But as as my kid gets better in his IEP, it's like, you know, are we gonna keep him in IEP? Are we gonna dance him into a normal classroom? You know, and that that's the kind of differences that I see as far as equity is like, you know, uh i- is he gonna be successful in this normal classroom rather than he's gonna be in the IEP classroom and be successful there? So that that's my take on it.
Ron, we're we're at the end of our uh interview here. So uh since Levon went first on the last one, you'll have a first opportunity to just comment on anything about your platform or positions that we might have overlooked and um give people a closing sense of who you are as a candidate.
All right. Well, yeah, my name is Ron Osman. I thank you guys for the opportunity to uh have me on your panel today. Uh and I thank Levon for uh joining with me. I mean, it's kind of kind of weird to have I mean, it's kind of weird to have not all the candidates here to have our discussion. But, I mean, it was a very, very, very good interaction with Levon and the panelists here. I believe that all students are equal in education and what they're learning. We need to focus on just a few key things. I mean, like, the whole thing with the national issues that are going on right now are playing also a big part with the pandemic. And we need to make sure that these kids, when these kids come back to school, that they receive the full value of their education and succeed at Redmond School District's mission in providing a fair and equitable education for all the students in Redmond. And, you know, I believe that a school board member should have a clear and concise judgment in order to make decisions on the board. And I'm willing to put my foot at the batter's plate for the parents and teachers and our students in order to achieve our goals at the Redmond School District. So my name is Ron Osmond, and I ask you to vote for me on my theme. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Levon?
Thank you. I'll keep it quick. I just want to, first of all, thank you all for creating this platform. It's actually the first time that I've been able to do this in my life. So thank you for giving it an opportunity. It's exciting. And it also encourages, it also prompts me to encourage people in the community to get involved with their local government. I've lived in Redmond since 2005. This is my first time running for elective office. And it makes me realize that we need to do a better job of helping people understand how they can learn about candidates. So I'm sharing with your listeners, the voter pamphlet is online. Please check that out. You know, I think all of the candidates, at least for position three, have social media accounts on Facebook. Please look at that so you can dig into your candidates. And if you are interested in learning more about me, please visit www.lavonfor schools, so levonforschools.com. And I would be grateful to respond to any questions or comments that you guys send in the website if you'd like to know more about myself or my position on any particular issue that we haven't addressed here today. My platform is wanting to create a safe and compassionate and an equitable learning environment for all of our children, to prepare them to be contributors to society, our community, and our global economy. And my hope is that we elect board members who are forward-thinking and have the professional and educational background to be able to forecast what those needs might be 10, 20 years down the road. So with that, I thank you. Please don't wait until my eighteenth to vote. Your ballots will come in in a couple of weeks. You can fill them out. Position three for Levon Medlock, and then drop them in the mail or drop them off at the library and pick up a book while you're at it. That's also a fun thing to do. And I look forward to serving you all. It would be my honor. Thank you.
We would just want to thank both of you for your time today. We know this isn't an easy process and we just thank you for taking part in the democratic process.
Thanks for the opportunity. Have a wonderful afternoon.
Yeah, you as well. Thanks, everybody.